I will now call the workshop to order at 2:39 PM. This is Sinclair, please call the row.
District one, Barbara McQuinn.
Here.
District two, Alexandria Ayala, absent. District three, Karen Brill.
Here.
District four, Erica Whitfield.
Here.
District five, Frank Barbiere.
I'm here.
District six, Marsha Andrews.
Here.
And district seven, Edwin Ferguson.
Sure.
Also joining us is Superintendent Michael Burke, General Counsel Sean Bernard, Inspector General Theresa Michael, and Board Clerk Toni Sinclair. Senior staff members will join us periodically as directed by the superintendent. Viewers and listeners can access the meeting today by either watching on Comcast Channels 234 and 235, U-verse Channel 99, or by using the YouTube link on our webpage at PalmBeachSchools.org. In the event that the link is interrupted for technical reasons, please switch over to the TV channels. All board meetings are recorded in their entirety and posted on the district's website within 24 hours. We also offer a listening-only option, which the public can access by calling 561-357-5900 or toll-free at 1-866-930-7015. The meeting ID is 1-561-880-1124. Okay, I'm now going to turn the workshop over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first workshop today is a budget workshop. Our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Heather Frederick, is going to update us on her ongoing quest to bring us a balanced budget for FY '25 and make sure all our dreams come true. So, Ms. Frederick?
All right, well, thank you. I can say that the budget is balanced, but I don't know that I can make all your dreams come true, but I will try. All right, so we have the close of the legislative session. I always appreciate during those even years that the legislative session ends in March, so it makes our job much easier, a little less stressful, that we can get, you know, we're not waiting till March in order to try to balance the budget. So I'm going to start with a legislative update, but I'm focusing just on those that have a financial impact, so you're going to have a much more detailed legislative update later on, over, I think, this upcoming month. I'm going to give a more detailed update from the budget, from what the legislature actually approved, and then a timeline for the remainder of the year. So one of the outstanding legislative items was the Florida retirement system and what was going to pass related to FRS. And so we ended up with a version closer to the Senate version. There was a slight increase in the rates, which was a little bit more than just the flat, no increase in rates that was originally proposed, but it's only .05%, which for our district results in an increase of approximately $500,000, so very minimal increase related to FRS. I do anticipate that we're going to start seeing, next year again, consideration for cost of living, because that's come up the last two years, so that's something we're going to have to look at as being a potential impact in the future. With deregulation, there was some, the deregulation that passed that had a financial impact or related to the financial side, there really wasn't that much. We no longer have to advertise in the newspaper, so there is some additional flexibility added to where we can post some of these items on our website. So we're working through, you know, what options as to when we're going to use our district website versus the county website, but it is going to be a substantial savings of approximately $100,000 or more in current advertising costs that we're using with the Palm Beach Post. The DOE is also allowed to reduce financial reporting requirements, reducing them to quarterly. Right now, we're not planning to reduce any of our current financial reporting, so we'll make sure to let the board know if we do exercise any of those options. And then a proposal that was something that was recommended by our district was to expand the use of COPS financing for non-school facilities, and that is something that was approved and included in deregulation. So that would include ancillary facilities like the bus depots. House Bill 1285, education, that's providing, there's a lot more in that bill, but one that has a financial impact is there's a $50 performance bonus for IB teachers in a class that was never counted and included as part of those bonuses before, which was Theory of Knowledge, or is Theory of Knowledge. That class has always been around. It's a standard, it's one of the baseline courses you have to take as an IB student, but it was never included with the bonuses, and it will be going forward. That has a financial impact of approximately $20,000 for our district. We don't know if we're going to be receiving any additional funding, or if it's just going to be in the allocation we're already receiving, but the impact is minimal at about $20,000. There's also a safety, in the safety legislation, House Bill 1473, there's a $1,000 bonus to each school principal and charter school that complies with all school safety requirements, and there was some additional money that was added in and appropriated in order to fund this bonus. Within House Bill 1403, School Choice Education, it just provided some more guidance and guidelines as to how the voucher money can be used, and also expanding it, making, clarifying that active military are able to access any of the voucher programs at any time. House Bill 5001 and 5003, the GAA and the implementation bill, really implement the budget. So with the GAA, that is where the FEFP is approved. In the GAA, we also have school recognition, a $200 million was approved. It used to be within the FEFP, it's now outside of the FEFP, so it's an additional $200 million set aside for school recognition. Workforce funding was $19 million, which is about flat where it is today. There's a school choice transportation stipend, which also relates to House Bill 5101 below, that was approved. That aligns with the voucher program, but it's a flat amount of $14 million that was set aside, and it's a first-come, first-served, so that's something that won't be coming out of district budgets. The $1,000 bonus that I mentioned in safety for principals in district and charter schools, the amount set aside statewide was 3.8 million in order to cover those bonuses. And then the classroom supply money, which that comes out of our base student allocation, but each year it's set, the GAA sets the amount that we have to allocate to teachers, and it's a minimum of $300 per teacher. And then I also mentioned under the House Bill 5101, in addition to the transportation stipend, another important change that they made is the Enrollment Stabilization Reserve, which is something that we were waiting on the legislature appropriating each year. Now they've put wording in, or verbiage in, is that it's set $250 million a year is the minimum amount that they have to make sure that they include within that enrollment stabilization program. So if enrollment comes in higher than what the state projected statewide, they have $250 million set aside in order to cover, in order to keep the funding flat and minimize the impact to districts, so we don't have that big prorated holdback that we were always worrying about. So two bills that did not pass, the Conversion Charter School Bill, which was going to require districts, if we had declining enrollment two years in a row, to give our land away, basically. And then Sovereign Immunity at the last minute didn't pass either. So Sovereign Immunity, though, is one that's been coming up each year, and I do anticipate we're going to see it next year, and at some point it is going to pass. I now wanted to quickly go through the FEFP and what actually our budget looks like, and I know this is a, there's a lot, so I'm going to just highlight a few of the line items. Starting with that Row One, that's the Unweighted FTE, we're projected to have an increase of 8,400 students, but that includes district-operated schools, charter schools, as well as vouchers. So the increase in district schools is 800, the increase in charter schools is 400, the increase in vouchers is 7,200. So the majority of the increase is expected in the voucher students. One thing I wanted to mention when you look at two, the Weighted FTE, that's how we're funded. The Weighted FTE is based on a cost factor. The cost factor, we receive a different amount of funding, whether they're a K3 student, whether they're a 4'8" student, we receive, whether they're a special needs student, we receive a certain weight. Each year, those cost factors are changed, and they're based on an average of the past three years. So the cost factors were changed, some of them were reduced, some of them were increased, but the changes that were made by the state ended up with a reduction of $5 million in our funding. So if the cost factors had remained exactly the same, we would have had actually $5 million more in revenue than what we actually do. The base student allocation, once you apply the comparable wage factor, which our comparable wage factor, which used to be known as the district cost differential, decreased slightly. That decrease in the comparable wage factor results in a reduction in revenue of $3 million. So just by the change in the cost factor and the change in the comparable wage factor, we already are starting out with $8 million less than what we would have received this current year. The increase in the BSA is $181, and that's 3.38%, but know that within that base student allocation, that's where the teacher compensation categorical is included. What I mentioned with the teacher supply money is included in there, instructional materials categorical, that used to be a categorical, is now included within there as well as reading, the reading program as well. There was a slight increase in the ESE guarantee, the Safe Schools categorical, as well as the mental health assistance allocation. Moving on to the enrollment breakdown, that's where you can see on lines rows 27 through 29, the projected increase in district-operated schools is 800. I mentioned in our last meeting that the state was projecting us to have a decrease of 400 students. We did push back on that, so we did get an approval of an increase instead of a decrease in enrollment, and the way that they balance that out is they reduce the vouchers slightly. So that is, you know, somewhat good, somewhat bad, because we want to make sure that the state projects the right amount statewide. So in looking at the net district funding available, it's $56 million. Within the base student allocation, there's an increase of $13.9 million that's set aside for the teacher compensation. So when we start with that $56 million net of charter schools and net of vouchers, we then have to go through what do we already know that we have to pay? So we have the increase in FRS, which is just a minimal increase of $500,000. That could have been between $40 and $50 million. So we're fortunate that that's only a $500,000 increase. We have the increase in mental health, as well as the teacher compensation, net of what the pass-through to charter schools would be. We know we're going to have some sort of increase in health premiums, but I'm going to factor that in below into what we have available within our surplus. We've already talked about the amount to sustain the ESER initiatives, a $7.8 million. We normally have an amount here to increase our contingency reserve to comply with board policy of 3%, which equates to approximately $5 million, but what I'm proposing to do is to use one-time funds, so because we still have one-time fund this current year, in order to fund that increase in the contingency, to leave some more available within the salary and benefits reserve. We need to align our staffing, we have an increase of 800 students, we have staffing that's going to go along with that increase in students, so that's 3.3 million. We have an impact of changes within our departments, which I'm going to go over, of 1.5 million. And then the salary settlement for our employees that have agreements effective on a calendar year, this reflects the full-year impact of the raise that was approved this current year in FY '24. So after addressing all of those, we have a surplus of $25.5 million. So if we take that surplus of $25.5 million, plus the increase in the teacher compensation categorical of $12 million, that leaves us $38 million for salary and benefits reserve So the impacts that we have to the general fund to sustain the ESER initiatives, which we've talked about in our last meeting, of $7.8 million, and then our changes in the departments of 1.5 million after we've gone through all of our department reviews, and the increase of the 1.5 million is 1.1 million to cover increases in different software programs, extra duty days to assist with ESE testing, to make sure that we continue to comply with the requirements of the testing within a certain timeframe, increases, and general increases in graduation, contracted software, travel and supplies, and some position changes, not adding positions, but some small changes within departments, just reorganizing and changing some position titles. And then the next is $250,000 in professional development and implementation of Destiny Library Manager. That's broken out as a separate line item, because those are one-time costs. So that's $250,000 for the Destiny Library Manager. We were utilizing Google Books, that's no longer open to the public, so we now have to, we have a manual intervention in place until we can implement this new module for Destiny Library Manager to continue to comply with the state statute. And then within the General Counsel's Department, adding one legal assistant, as well, they've had some general increases in court reporting costs, as well as consultants, and that totals $150,000. So all the changes in departments, it totals 1.5 million. We've already gone through the enrollment history, but this is just updated with the actual enrollment, and one item I didn't highlight is that now the vouchers are projected to be higher, voucher students are projected to be higher than charter school students, for the first year. Within our Capital Projects Fund, that is still in development. I do anticipate by our next board workshop that we will have all of the changes and proposals within our capital plan, but based on the last board workshop that we have, we're looking to add in the Riviera Beach High School, as well as the addition of the elementary school out in Westlake. We are adding some additional positions within capital and capital maintenance transfer. Those positions really kind of work together, and it depends on what type of duties of those positions as to whether they fall within capital or capital maintenance transfer. So it's a little over $1 million in positions to help provide support to the sales tax initiatives with all the different programs and projects that are currently being implemented. So with that, we do have some, we continue to have some uncertainty in enrollment, you know, what is count eight going to look like? We are projecting to have that increase of 800 students. We continue to monitor that now through the start of school and throughout the summer periods. We know that we are going to have an increase within our health claims, our health premiums, and, you know, monitoring just legislation as to what's going to happen in the future, because I do anticipate we're going to see some increases in FRS in the future. Within the Capital Projects Fund, we know that we're working on, the board has approved going to continue the sales tax referendum, and that will be going to the voters in November, and that's important to supplement our capital budget. We had a budget advisory committee yesterday, I went over the same material with the committee yesterday. Our next budget advisory committee meeting is scheduled for April 23rd. Depending on the amount of information we have available, I may have to reschedule that meeting, because it's mainly going to be focused on the capital budget, but our next board workshop is May 1st, and that's where we anticipate to have more information on the capital budget. So with that, I will open it up to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barbiere.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to encourage my colleagues to ask a lot of questions, because Chairwoman Brill's trying to beat my record of having the shortest meeting on record, so please ask questions tonight. With respect to Slide 4, the $200 million for school recognition, so I've asked you before about the questions I'm getting from different Saks.
Yes.
Is this money fund those? Is that, this money goes to the Saks, at the schools?
Yes, it does, it goes to the Saks at the schools.
Okay, good. And in Slide 9, I saw changes in different departments, including the General Counsel's Office, but I know that the Inspector General's been telling all of us that she needs more auditors in her department. I didn't see any increases. Is it because she has money that she hasn't spent yet in her budget, where she's just not found the people, or she actually is, she had her limit right now of what she has available?
I will have to give that to Ms. Michael to respond to.
I have not made the formal request. It's based mainly on whether or not we want an increase on the investigations, and in doing that, we would lower what we were referring to OPS. And that was something that I had put out to both the superintendent and to several board members, that I'm willing to do that, but it would have to be, you know, an agreement. This was not a formal request that I put forward to them.
So, since the board is actually considering the budget, is it your desire to have more?
I could definitely use more staff, and that way would alleviate some of OPS's, you know, weight, but, you know, I don't want to step into OPS's territory and take more things from them, almost like, you know, if I'm stepping on somebody's toes, basically.
Well, I mean, I'm not suggesting you should step on anybody's toes, but if, under your responsibilities as our Inspector General, if you feel you need more auditors to do your work without particularly impacting OPS, you know...
It was mainly to help OPS with their workload. OPS has been having, and I, you know, leave it up to Mr. Kueberg to say that they have a lot of cases there, and my suggestion was that if you increase my staff, we could lower what we normally would send to OPS, and we would take those on.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, I appreciate the offer. At this point, you know, we've brought new leadership into OPS, they're working hard, we've got a team in there, and with the CARES report, as you see, there's plenty of cases coming in that have to be investigated, but I feel like we're turning the corner, we're starting to close out more cases than we open in a given month, and the new leadership didn't kind of inherit a backlog, where that department was, kind of had fallen behind for a couple of years, so I'd like to give the OPS team a chance to kind of stabilize and see how much ground they can make up before we entertain, I guess, this next step to try to offload some of that work to the IG's office.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shepherd. So a question, I know that, while I was just up in your office earlier today, that it's difficult for you to get to all the schools to do your audits. Is that because you don't have enough auditors to get it done, or what is the issue with respect to not being able to get to them?
We are able to get to the schools for the audits, we're not getting them done as quick as we'd like. One of the problems is that we were down three staff, and filling those with experienced auditors is impossible. Basically, Heather's been taking people from the Auditor General's office, and to find experienced auditors for what we pay, it just won't happen, it just won't happen. So we're having to grow our own. As far as the construction oversight, I only have one person there. We can take on more work for the construction oversight and contracting. Again, you know, if I have the people, the work's out there, we can do it. Inspections, I definitely don't have enough people to do those, to do the safety and security inspections, I'd like to be able to do every school every year, but I don't have those staff to do that. And those are things that I've taken on that are extra beyond what we normally do, so I've been very tentative about affecting the district's budget. I'm meeting all my statutory requirements, I'd love to do more, but I don't want to have a negative impact on the district.
So is Mr. Bliss, is he the only construction auditor you have available?
I have, I have, I have one construction auditor right now, it is contract and procurements.
Okay, you need more than that?
We definitely, if we have more, see, our workload is self-generated, so I will not add more work onto there if we can't handle it, that's one of the things that we don't do. But if I have more staff, yes, we will take on more work.
I think, I would like to have you meet with the superintendent and OPS and the General Counsel's Office, and I'm concerned about the construction auditing. I want to make sure there's enough construction auditing going on to make sure that we catch any issues before they happen, or while the contracts are being reviewed, or whatever, than finding them out two years later. So I would like you to meet with the other administrative people and figure out whether or not there's a need for additional construction auditing, and make sure that the administration knows, so we can factor that into the budget before it's approved.
We could definitely do it if the funding's there for the positions, we're more than willing to take it on and do more.
Okay. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, so, you know, with the IG reports, of course, directly to the school board, and so the budget matters really, Ms. Frederick coordinates the whole process and kind of will pass that information through to the board for your ultimate approval. Happy the team can work with Ms. Michael and her staff if they want to develop like a growth budget for next year, and maybe you could provide, you know, a staffing request along with what the return would be, and the board could expect to see how much more cases and inspections and investigations you could take on. And then, well, the good thing about the budget process is we'll be at it, you know, pretty much month to month from now until September, so there is time to entertain those requests and let the board ultimately decide if they can partway with the money, because you're going to, I mean, the punchline to this whole budget presentation is $38 million is in play for salary and benefits, and we're going to find out that that's not enough to really make our employee groups happy.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Whitfield.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of comments and questions. This comparable wage factor, the previous DCD, is something I always thought was really interesting. Why did it go down so much for us when, I feel like Palm Beach County is more expensive than ever? Do you know the reasoning?
It's based on a three-year average of the Florida Price Level Index, and I actually looked to try to find it online, and it hasn't been updated yet, but it is an average, it's supposed to be an average of the last three years.
Oh, so are there, do you think there are counties that, you know, adjusted differently and went up?
It's different for each county. It's different for each county, and it's based on, so ours should be based on the Florida Price Level Index for Palm Beach County.
So just for talking purposes, we can say that the state of Florida has only given us 3.38% increase over last year, but...
It's actually less than that, it's 2.27.
The other number at the bottom, the two?
The one on the number, it's the one on the bottom, 2.27.
2.27, that one?
Yes.
But from my understanding, just so everyone out there who's listening understands this, everyone has been telling me that the increase in cost of living is around 7% last year. Is that what your understanding is as well?
You know, based on inflation, I do think it's a little less than that, but, I mean, that's, would be consistent.
Yeah, so it's just, I think, as we're going forward into our discussions around pay for teachers, we really have to keep in mind that we didn't get as much money as we're going to be asked to give to our staff, all staff, not just teachers, and I think this is a really unfortunate outcome of the legislature, and it's just frustrating to me to see a very small amount of increase given to us, and then we're going to hopefully try to make up for that 7% or whatever it is that has been happening within our state. I know you mentioned the one-time funds to go into the, hold on, what did you say, contingency reserve? Can you explain that a little bit more?
Well, for the current year, we do have some lapse salary, because those ESER positions are still being funded through the ESER grant, and so that is going to allow us to have some additional available one-time funds this current year. So when we close out the current year, we'll increase the contingency to make sure to comply with what we need to for FY '25.
And that just to keep it at the 3%?
And that's to just keep it at the 3%.
Just to keep it at 3%. Okay, thank you very much. There's no other place that you're using one-time funds, just that?
That's the one place, because the contingency is a one-time fund, so it's a, it's a good place to put the funds.
Good point, okay, thank you, I just want to make sure we're being careful now that I've heard so much about one-time funds.
No, that...
Thank you.
Yes, and it is a good lesson, you know, of not using, you know, one-time funds for recurring raises.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Andrews.
Yes, and thank you, Ms. Fredericks, for your excellent work with keeping our monies intact and prudent spending. We really appreciate your work. Three questions, the first one, with the ESER funding, I know you've been keeping people informed in so many ways, on the computer, at your budgets, interventions, as letting people know exactly where we are and what we're spending. Now that everything's shutting down, will there be some kind of document for the public? I'm sure the press is going to be asking, and others will want to know, how did you spend the money? Did you spend it all? Was it spent wisely? What's the plan now that everything's getting ready to be closed down? And I do know you sent it to the state, too, so what's the plan now that it's all going to be ending?
We are working through the final amendment right now. We are working through the final amendment right now with the Florida Department of Education. So once that's finalized, my plan, even though we have until September 30th to spend the ESER funds, my plan is to have it fully spent by June 30th, at least our share. I do anticipate that we will have some carryover for the charter schools. But we started communication with the charter schools back in February, and we saw a big push from charter schools of submitting reimbursement requests. And we're going to continue that communication with the charter schools monthly to make sure that they fully spend their money as well. And then in conclusion, so after the end of the fiscal year, as part of the budget development process, we'll be able to provide a final report as to how the funds were spent.
Thank you. That's a big deal, because I know we're gonna be looked at with the kind of money that we were given. You know, people are looking to make sure that we did what we were supposed to do, so I do appreciate that. And then also, I want to say, I'm so happy to see Westlake, the new elementary school that's here in the budget. It's so needed. Thank you so very much with that piece for our district. And also, just a continuation of the sales tax initiative. Can you give us a little update of what the next stages are as we move forward with that?
Yeah, so the, the next step is we are required to have a review that was initiated by OPAGA. We will have a kickoff meeting on this Friday with internal staff as well as the external audit firm that was assigned to it. And then next Tuesday, the, the Board of Palm Beach County is going to be approving, submitting the ballot language to the supervisor of elections. So that's, so we're moving along with the, with the timeline.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Vice Chair McQuinn.
Thank you. And of course, you know how much I appreciate the work that you do, Ms. Frederick. I appreciate Mr. Burke's offer to our IG, Ms. Michael, for, to work with staff on a growth budget. Love that idea. And then, of course, I'm gonna follow up a meeting and have a meeting with Ms. Michael also, but I appreciate that so that every, the left hand knows what the right hand is doing, et cetera. I very much appreciate that. There was discussion, well, I'm sorry, I stepped away from the dais, about whether we needed more staff so that it didn't have to be turned over to professional standards. I totally agree with Mr. Burke, with our HR chief. I'm never going to remember his name. I am so, Mr. Kubrick, oh my goodness. Okay. It's only his name, but I appreciate his work. You know I have praised him. I do believe that with a relatively new director for professional standards, he needs some continuity. So, and I, I've, almost every board member over the last seven years has expressed concern about how slow we are to bring professional standards issues to closure. I know some cases are more difficult than others, but we have a lot sitting there. So if more staff is added, and no, I don't like more staff added, but if more staff is added, right now it would seem to me that it would be in the professional standards area to be able to move things along more consistently and more quickly there. Sorry again, Mr. Kubrick.
Thank you, Vice Chair McQuinn. Mr. Superintendent, that seems to end our comments.
Okay. That concludes the budget workshop. Thank you, Ms. Frederick. Nice job. I'm gonna invite up Mr. Tim Kubrick, our Chief of HR, to take us through some policy changes. Mr. Kubrick's having a big day.
We had our annual job fair at the fairgrounds from 11:00 to 2:00 today. I had a chance to swing by it quickly before our meeting, and by all accounts, it was very well-attended. I think the, the marketing efforts that you all put together, working with our communications team, paid off. And so anyway...
It was very exciting. Yeah, we devoted a lot of resources to marketing the event, and it appears to pay it off. We had lots of applicants, lines of applicants for non-instructional jobs as well, and line of cars trying to get into the event. So it looked really good. So, and it, great way to kick off the, the start of the hiring season, so.
Very good. Mr. Kubrick, would you introduce the team for us and then take it away?
Yes, so I'm joined by Annette Ariaga. She's a specialist for retirements. Christine Posnick, our ADA coordinator, and Jean Marie Middleton, Assistant General Counsel. So we have three policy recommendations to share with you today. I consider these to be more of a housekeeping type of change than anything else. The first one is Policy 3.06, which covers the Americans with Disabilities Act, employee rights and accommodations. First, the links to the policy were updated to, these, these forms are, let me go there. These forms are used to request a reasonable accommodation, but then to also release medical information to be used during the interactive ADA process. Just contact information was, was updated in these forms. Next, this function was housed in the Office of Professional Standards for a number of years and was completed by the EEO Coordinator. Since then, the function now is housed within compensation, and we have a dedicated ADA team and an ADA coordinator. So we're replacing the EEO Coordinator with ADA Coordinator. The remaining two changes are just ADA phone number, and then also to broaden the reference from professional standards to human resources. Because while this function will lie with human resources, it is always possible that the department overseeing the function could change, but we'll leave it at human resources so we don't have to continue bringing any changes back to the, to the board. And that's all the changes for that. Any questions?
I don't see any questions.
All right. Please take us to next policy.
Sure. Next policy is 3.20, which deals with employee resignations and terminations for the district. Last year, the legislature extended drop, sorry, I'm good. Last year extended drop for all employees from five to eight years. And upon entering drop, our policy outlines that percentages of sick leave balances be distributed to employees or placed in a bank account. The current policy calls for 100% of sick leave to be moved to these accounts or distributed to employee after year five. So if any employees who wish to extend, to continue and drop beyond year five, they will be left without any sick leave. So our recommendation is to adjust the percentages for years five through eight to reflect the statute-driven increase and drop to the new max of eight years. What that looks like is for the end of fiscal year five to be adjusted from 100% down to 50%, and then adding end of fiscal year six at 50%, end of fiscal year seven at 50%, and end of fiscal year eight at 100%. That's all the changes for that. Any questions?
No. Keep, take us to Policy 3.302.
Yes, well, this is an even easier one. So Policy 3.32, Performance Pay for Administrators and Instructional Staff. This policy was created in 2003 when the state statute required each district developed their own program for performance pay. Since then, state statutes were revised, and they do provide a very detailed and descriptive methodology for administering, administering performance pay for both administrators and instructional staff, which makes this policy obsolete. So our recommendation is to repeal this policy as it is no longer needed. And that's it. Any questions?
Yep. If there's no questions, that concludes the HR policy workshop.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, second by Mrs. Andrews. Any discussion? All in favor, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously with six board members present. Okay, I'm gonna move right into the special meeting. I'll now call the special meeting to order at 3:16 PM. Let the record reflect that we still have a quorum with six board members present. Board members, we have eight sets of minutes on the agenda. I will take a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, second by Vice Chair McQuinn. Any discussion? All in favor, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I don't have any items to add for good cause. Mr. Superintendent, do you have any items to withdraw?
No, Madam Chair.
Board members, do you have any items to pull from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to review and approve the agenda. Motion by Mrs. Andrews, second by Mr. Ferguson. Any discussion? All in favor, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Any board members have any disclosures or abstentions? Seeing none. Mr. Superintendent, comments?
Just two comments today. April 3rd is Paraprofessional Appreciation Day, so I just wanted to take a minute to thank our approximately 1,300 paraprofessionals that work throughout the district doing a variety of important functions, from the classroom to being, you know, assisting teachers to being a one-on-one assistant to students, to helping speakers of other languages, you know, our ELL students. They really do a lot here and are a vital part of Team Palm Beach. And then also, just wanted to mention that April 1st through 5th is National Assistant Principals Week. And so we want to just celebrate our assistant principals who are vital, and we've got close to 400 assistant principals across our schools that are the, the right hand of the principal and really make sure our schools run smoothly. So I just wanted to thank all of them, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Whitfield? Thank you. Mr. Barbieri?
I've gotta say something here. You're getting close to my record. Actually, I just want to point out that, to the, to the people that will be calling tonight about the electricity at West Boca High School, the district did pay the electric bill. I know this is the second time in a couple of weeks that they've had no power at that school, but my understanding from talking to Mr. Sanchez and the superintendent is that it's not the same issue. So we fixed, apparently the first one was fixed, and this is a new issue. So before you all start calling tonight, we are doing what we can.
Power's back.
Okay. Great. That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Barbieri. Mrs. Andrews?
And thank you. I do have a few things, and I hope you can be patient with, patient with me, and I have a few pictures. The pictures are worth 1,000 words. I want to say that my work for you all on the Criminal Justice Commission has been immense. In the last few days of last week, I was able to do a two-day prison tour. It's called the Judge Marvin Mount's Prison Tour. It was so profound and impacting. So hopefully, we'll see some of the pictures. But at first, I want to thank Judge Gerba. He is our fourth District Court of Appeals judge. He is awesome. He planned this trip for all of us. It was about 35 to 40 people in play there, former and retired Judge Moses Baker and his wife. And we had the wardens, Warden Shelley Baker and Warden Tiffany Knox. They took us everywhere over a two-day period. We first toured the Loxahatchee Road Prison, which is right here at the fairgrounds. I had never been inside that prison. It's very clean and neat. I would never want to be in prison, but it was one of the prisons that I thought was at least accommodating a bit to the prisoners. I mean, they have wonderful grounds, they can go outside and work, and they have a way to get out. But as we moved over the next few days, we traveled on the bus to Lake Correctional Institution in Claremont, which is a mental health care hospital. We visited the Sumter Correctional Institution, which contains various vocational industries. The next day, we visited Lowell Correctional Institute, Florida's first women's prison. When you think about where the women go, it's at Lowell. We drove to the Reception and Medical Center, which receives and classifies new male inmates. So many prisoners, so many prisoners. Then we visited the Union Correctional Institution, where Death Row is located. And we ended our prison tour at the Florida State Prison, where Death Row is located. And we visited the execution chambers, where the electric chair and the bed is located, where prisoners are put to death through medical. And it was just such a profound thing to see. I saw a lot of prisoners getting training, but a lot of them are on life. They'll never get out. All of your license plates are made at the prisons. If you don't know that, when you put them on your car, they're made at the prisons. Also, when you think about your tolls at the Florida Turnpike, the prisoners actually modify that information, send it to you when you get your letter in the mail to know you have a bill, that you've gone through the turnpike. It's done at the prisons. Mr. Burke, you probably know, printing is a big deal at our Florida prisons. So, so many inmates are getting skills, but many of them, it's a life-ending time where they don't get a chance to get out. So being proactive as an educator is so important to me, that we try to keep our families, our children, our people out of the correctional system. But when you see them, you know, they're there, and we have to protect them and do the best that we can, that they have a good life, the best that they can under those circumstances. And lastly, I was able to attend the Council of Great City Schools Policy and Legislative Conference. It was a wonderful experience. I was able to meet with our U.S. Secretary of Education, Miguel Cordona, and we had questions and answers. Then I was able to go over and visit Lois Frankel, our congressman's office, as well as our congressman, Jared Moskowitz, and to tell them, we're doing great work here in Palm Beach County, and we appreciate everything that they do for us at the federal level for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Ferguson.
You forgot my name now?
Got caught in my throat.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think I'll be brief today. So first off, I want to say welcome back to all of our students. I know you're, you're going into this PM3 testing phase now. I was speaking with the chief of schools, and he advised me that most of our school, most of our students are gonna start this third level of testing here in the next week or two. So this is a really intense time for staff, for the administrators, for the family, for the students as well. So just know that we, as the board, and the superintendent as well, definitely believe in you. We know that you're gonna knock it out of the park, and we're looking to hear about good things. We're gonna get that A-rating back here in short fashion. I also want to say Happy Autism Acceptance Month, because the month of April is actually Autism Acceptance Month. So just being very quick, for those, for those parents or persons who are listening who have questions as to whether your child has autism, I would encourage you to go to AutismSpeaks.org. AutismSpeaks, with an S, dot org. There's a lot of information there that could be very helpful for you and your family. We know that the number of children diagnosed as having autism has increased from 2.2% to 2.7%, which may seem minuscule to you, but that was basically one out of 44. And now Autism Speaks is saying that we're at about one out of, one in 36. We know that early diagnosis is key for those children who are, I guess you would say higher perform, I don't wanna say this, but higher performing on a particular end of the spectrum. If they get the necessary treatment, ABA therapy, earlier in life, they have a very good prospects for being more independent as adults. And as parents, as a parent of someone with autism, and I know I'm not the only board member who can say this, that is something that I, we all want. We all want our children to be able to provide for themselves as, as an adult. So again, if you think that your child may have autism, don't try to go this alone. Please go to AutismSpeaks.org. There's a lot of information there as well. Also, Project Uplift was again a, a great success. We had roughly 35 volunteers. I did notice that we had a large uptick in the number of seniors. I guess they're trying to get those last community service hours in, which is, is fine. We haven't designated the location of this month's event, but of course, it'll be on the fourth Saturday, and it'll be at 9:00 AM until roughly 11:00 to 11:15. It's getting a little hot outside, so we don't want to keep the students out there any longer than is necessary. But it's a very easy and enjoyable three hours of community service. So I'll be getting that information out to the appropriate parties here within the next week. Last but not least, I know we're gonna recognize them in greater detail at our, at our actual general body meeting in a few weeks, but for those who don't know, Dr. Arthur Anderson passed away. He is someone who most recently was the supervisor of elections here in Palm Beach County, and before that, he was a school board member as well. So I don't want to belabor at this point in time, but he was a, was a giant of a man. He will be missed. And Dr. Anderson, from me to you, wish you, wish you all the peace. And also, my heart goes out to your family. I hope that they are, are doing well at this very challenging time as well. And those are all my comments for today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Vice Chair McQuinn?
I'm going to focus on just one school today, but I haven't spoken in a while, and so many great things have happened recently that I'll just piecemeal it. Today, I had the privilege of being at Timber Trace Elementary to recognize our THANKA teacher, Mrs. Shannon Culp, media specialist, and pointing out that her father-in-law is a former, longtime principal in our district. So we do keep a lot of our educators in families. The school, I have, frankly, I told them, I somewhat neglect Timber Trace because they, they're such an amazing school community, and Mr. Sanchez will appreciate this, but they had been waiting for a cafeteria for just about a year, I think. And I have to tell you, I didn't get one email from, I would hope, at an elementary school, a student, but I didn't get one email from a parent or a staff member. They were so incredibly patient, but I will tell you, our communications chief, Mr. Cooley and I, Principal Pascarello toured us. It's basically a new wing, which has this incredible beautiful cafeteria with the stage and the cafeterias, we know our elementary schools do. The clinic is beautiful. The nurses were beside themselves and a teacher area where they check their mail and that kind of thing. So thank you to our facilities department for doing such a great job and to the community, the Timber Trace community for their patience and get, I think they had, didn't have hot lunches for, I think it was spring break, just right, Mr. Sanchez is nodding his head. So they were very patient, but they're also very, very appreciative of having their new facilities. They're enjoying it very much. So go Timber Trace. Had a great day today and I'll bring more next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair McQuinn. So I'm just going to mention that some of us had the opportunity last night to attend the Scholastic Achievement Foundation Dinner. And I have to tell you, I was in total awe of these students and so very proud to be a part of the school district when you heard the schools that these children would be attending and the programs that they were going to be studying. Some of the schools, of course, we had the requisite UF and Florida State, we knew those were gonna be there, UCF. But schools that were mentioned, such as Duke, a lot of students go into Duke University, Princeton, Yale, Harvard, MIT, to hear these, hear these schools, to see these students and to hear how many are going into biomedical, tech, you know, science, we really are doing an amazing job. So kudos to all of those students. Congratulations to them. Congratulations to all of our educators because you are putting out some amazing young people. I can't wait to see what they achieve in the future. So thank you. That will bring us now to agenda item speakers. We do not have any tonight, so that brings us to the, the consent agenda. I'll take a motion to approve. A motion by Mr. Barbieri, second by Mr. Ferguson. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We don't have any new business, so Mr. Barbieri, I'm going to take a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I'll make sure you have the record forever.
Madam Chair, so I make the motion that we adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Barbieri, seconded by Mrs. Whitfield.